Good evening, and welcome to this evening's Board of Education meeting. The secretary will call the role of each board member to determine if a quorum is present.
Ms. Barth Fagan?
Here.
Mr. Gardner?
Here.
Mr. Groupie?
Here.
Mr. Kimpton?
Here.
Mrs. Moon?
Here.
Ms. Nichols?
Here.
And Ms. Schreiber is here.
And now if you will all join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, recognitions and presentations. Anyone from the audience who would like to address the board may do so when the agenda item is being discussed. Before you approach the podium, you will need to sign in on the sheet provided at the media table. And as you approach the podium, please provide your name. And if you have any printed correspondence you want to share with the board, please leave those items at the media table with Mr. Satinon, and he will share those with us at the conclusion of the meeting. Remarks may be limited to three minutes and to one appearance at the podium. Questions directed to the board may not be answered immediately. All questions will be responded to by an appropriate person as soon as possible. Persons who wish to suggest items for the agenda should contact the superintendent. Sedalia School District Foundation, I don't see any, it's Paula, I'm sorry, yes, hi.
Hello, my name is Paula Shoup, and I am the administrative assistant for the Sedalia School District Foundation. I'd like to highlight some of the events that we have had over the past month. The first one being, of course, the weekend for Smith Cotton Homecoming. We had two large events that weekend. The first one was our tailgate party in the new tent. If you had an opportunity to see it, it was set up outside of the gates into the stadium. It was, it's beautiful, it has an open space inside of it, we can have lots of seating underneath it. A little cold and windy that night in particular, we'll hope for better weather next year. But it was a great location behind the auxiliary gym at the high school. It definitely drew people into the location. And the grilling right there in front of the stadium gates made it a successful event. I know we had alumni from classes of sixty-eight, seventy-eight, eighty-three, eighty-eight, and two thousand and three. That just happens to be people, the classes I knew people from. Of course, we had the band, we always feed the band, and then they did a wonderful performance after that. Got everybody revved up before the game. And we'd like to say a special thank you to Richie Simon and the maintenance department. And they had assistants from the Farnell Company's maintenance for putting up and taking down the tent. The pancake breakfast on Saturday morning was also a very successful event. I think that was one of the best attended events we've ever had for that. We had a lot of enthusiastic singers, a lot of kids that were really dressed up for it. It was lovely, the fact that we did serve the pancakes in the cafeteria with the performances in the gym worked great. We want to say a special thank you to Mrs. Nolan and her administrative team at the high school. Who, Mrs. Nolan and her administrative team at the high school, who just had the performance area set up really nice, thank you so much. We also again had alumni who joined us and wandered the halls of their Smith Cotton High School. And a very, very huge thank you to the elementary, middle school, and junior high music teachers who prepared the students as well as gave up a Saturday morning, a very early Saturday morning, to have their children perform. We also want to let you know, right now, we are in the middle of our payroll contribution campaign. We invite employees of the Sedalia School District to partner with the foundation and support us. And right now, that campaign is going on, emails have been sent out. As well as if somebody needs information, they can always contact our office or go to our website. And that is open until November third. We are doing the same project we always do. Any contribution twenty-five dollars or over gets a Sonic Drink on Sonic Drink Week. And then the school with the highest percentage of donors will also receive a luncheon. So we want to encourage everybody to participate in that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Paula. And next is NEA, Mr. Jenke?
Yeah, I'm here. Good evening, guys. Not much going on right now, kind of a lull period. We're still recruiting, I feel like Laverne sends me another name every week of somebody being added to our roster. So we're excited to still see the names rolling in. Speaking of Laverne, she's our Uniserv Director, so she's like the regional director for NEA, another resource for our members. I know Dr. Fraley, you met her last week with, at Skyline. She's trying to get into the elementary buildings. And it's not, it's not anything other than just trying to show what NEA can do for teachers. It's beyond just the, what you typically hear from union reps. They have a program to help teachers effectively navigate the student loan forgiveness, which is huge for a lot of our teachers. The program that is pushed by other organizations because NEA developed something that was so robust. So things like that, different grants for classrooms. So she's really there as a resource to introduce herself, but also, you know, show teachers, all teachers, what kind of things NEA offers, you know, in terms of helping out in their classroom. So you guys may hear her reach out to different principals. Thank you to Ms. McFatrick for letting her come in, and Dr. Fraley, I'm glad you got to put a face with the name. Other than that, we've, Josh and I met with the Berg and Marshall last week because they're curious on, you know, how we do things here with you guys. And really, it was an opportunity to brag. I've been to different conferences and things with NEA over the summer, and you hear horror stories about different boards and things like that being very combative. And so we just had a chance to brag and appreciate you guys' willingness to develop a relationship with you all. And so we appreciate that. Other than that, I reached out to Dr. Fraley again about meeting NEA with Mr. Kimpton, Ms. Nichols. I know I reached out before, but homecoming and life gets busy. So when we can, I hope we can nail down a date and do that because, you know, the normal stuff, salary benefits, retention, recruitment. But then, any other concerns of members, we just want to make sure that we have a chance to sit down in a room and hash out. And I felt like last year was a very honest, raw conversation. But, you know, we came out on the other end, I think, very well, and you guys heard those concerns. So, other than that, like I said, kind of a lull period, we'll pick up recruiting later on in the spring. But it still seems like a few people are trickling in, so. You guys have any questions for us?
Thanks.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. SCEA is kind of in a lull also right now, but we do have some important dates that are coming up. Beginning the first week of November, we will begin taking nominations for the Outstanding Associate. So we'll be doing voting in each building on that, and then announce the building winners in mid-November. We're also doing outstanding educator nominations have opened up this week, I believe. We've got the parent-teacher conferences, and so we're going to encourage everyone to remind the parents that they have a voice in that and that they can vote for an educator that might have made a difference in the life of their child. And the more votes we get, the better it is. We're also going to be doing the teacher scholarships soon with staff in November, and we will be voting on those in our December meeting. Obviously, applicants must be enrolled in a program for the spring semester to have scholarship consideration. That's about all we've got going right now, so.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
And I will now hear a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So, is there a change on the personnel recommendations?
It was just the one that was walked in tonight, so not really.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the addition, possible addition of the additional personnel recommendations.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And the consent agenda items, four point one to four point six, do I hear a motion to accept?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And four point seven, payment of bills with Mr. Kimpton abstaining, do I have a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Under decisions, unfinished business, Dr. Fraley, the MOCAT agreement?
Yes, I brought to this for discussion at the last board meeting. Agreement, it's a resolution with MOCAT, which is the Missouri Capital Asset Advantage Treasury. It just establishes a relationship, a non-binding relationship with MOCAT for potential investment of district funds. Gives us another option to go along with MOSIP when we're trying to generate as much interest revenue as possible with our funds.
So, just a question. So, once this is in place, will have three ways to invest our, invest money in the district in qualified interest-bearing things? Will have MOSIP, MOCAT, and the program that we have through Equity Bank?
That is correct.
Okay, all right, I'll make a motion to approve the...
Is there any other questions or comments for Dr. Fraley? I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And the website design and branding is, are you presenting that?
Yeah.
Megan, okay.
Flip to that page. Yeah, the district had been exploring, of course, we have to remind everybody we are going through, from Blackboard being our host site for our web design to Final Site. And we have sought out the consultation with Callison Associates, which is the area local marketing firm here in Sedalia, to give us guidance and feedback as to how our new website design would look and the information that should and should not be on there. Kind of just a redesign of the website and a relook at the user experience, look through the eyes of a marketing company, takes it out of, does not take it out of our control by any means, but it gives a fresh set of eyes on the information that we're putting out and what information that we want to promote. So you kind of have two things going on here. The neither fee rises to the threshold of board approval from an accounting standpoint because both, these are two separate items, under fifteen thousand dollar threshold. The second item has to do with branding our district. Now, if we're to enter a situation where we're talking about potentially new logos, new branding items, and how we sell ourselves, how we market our district, then I feel that that needs, you know, board approval to move forward. You're looking at potential copyright, trademark kind of situations. Should the board like what is presented? And if we move forward with that, then of course that would require board approval.
Are there any questions for Dr. Fraley?
This is, and when you're talking about the website, you're talking basically about the external, between the district and the community, the back office things that you will be doing that the website is used for by personnel of the district will basically not be touched?
Actually, looking at both from an internal and external perspective. From, from all different types of audiences that we have. And Mr. Satinon's down below here, and he's, he's more than welcome to, to help answer some of those questions. He, he currently is our, he does the web, our website. Mr. Satinon's not necessarily a web developer. He's our communications director, and he wears a lot, a lot of hats. But web, actual web design and web development is not necessarily, that's not what he's trained in an expert at.
Will our, will, will our capability to put something quickly out there be limited by this agreement?
The platform we're using is very user-friendly. Mostly what we're looking at is transforming our website from a parking lot of information into a marketing machine to help us promote the district and promote the good things that are happening with our students and our staff members. So the experience on the outside is going to be more dynamic and hopefully have everything within just a couple of clicks for people to find. It'll be organized better.
Good.
On the backend, it'll be just as easy to use as what we have now. It's, it's what's called an app-based platform. So there's not a lot of coding that we have to know. We drop apps in, and then we drop content in to the appropriate places.
So basically, so basically, you or other authorized users in the district, if we have to get something out to the public like early outs or anything like that, you'll be able to get them out in the same record time?
Absolutely.
Okay, so I need, make a motion, will you approve?
Any, any other questions for Mr. Satinon or Dr. Fraley? No? You have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the agreement with Callison Associates.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good, thank you. And next is the board meeting schedule revision, Dr. Fraley?
Yeah, this comes back to you guys for decision to move the January date from January twenty-ninth to January twenty-second. Kind of evens up our winter, winter board meeting schedule. And so we will be able to meet at least before January twenty-ninth. We had about six weeks in between meetings. December eleventh is the last one before Christmas break. So this kind of evens out the timeframe that we will meet.
There's no questions about that? I'll ask for a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And on to decisions, the annual audited financial statements for 2023?
Yes, we received our, our full report from our auditors, FIC, Egmyer, Williamson CPAs out of St. Louis. We're very, very pleased to say that they have found no deficiencies or material weaknesses this year. In the couple of years past, we've had a couple of material weaknesses, mainly involved in food service and incorrect applications on free and reduced of how parents filled it out, and we didn't necessarily catch the mistake that was on the form from the parent. But this year, we have an incredibly clean audit. They found absolutely really nothing. I want to commend Lisa Hammerly, and Business Director, Kristy Johnson, and all the other ladies in the office that worked very tirelessly, gathering and organizing all the volumes and volumes of papers and documentation that goes into that. It is literally stacks of paper waist-high that goes into this audit every single year.
Thank you.
A lot of time and energy put into that, so I'm greatly thankful for those ladies.
Any questions for Dr. Fraley? If not, I will ask for a motion to approve the audited financial statements 2023 as presented.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And, Dr. Fraley, the annual secretary of the board report.
Okay, much like the audit, the ASBR is submitted every year, and it requires board approval. We have received our balance letter from DESI, and it has been approved. And the report is in front of you. It will show you that we ended June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three, which is the end of our fiscal year. And the general incidental fund wound up with thirty-three million, three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars and fifty-four cents. In the capital projects fund, we ended the year with seventeen million, six hundred and ninety-seven thousand, five hundred and fifty-four dollars and eleven cents. For a total of all funds of fifty-one million, twenty-six thousand, three hundred and eighty-three dollars and sixty-five cents. It comes out to a general unrestricted ending fund balance, which is incidental in teachers' fund of about sixty, well, not about, it is sixty-one point three four percent.
Any questions for Dr. Fraley?
I just want to commend you, the, for running a tight ship. I'm looking at object code sixty-three seventeen, and I am amazed. We have basically forty thousand and a half in legal services. That's amazing, considering that we spent another forty, forty-five thou, four hundred and fifty thousand or so on, on architectural and engineering, which is the way it should be.
Legal fees do add up.
Tell me about it.
Any other comments or questions? If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve the annual secretary of the board report as presented.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And request for proposal for drinking water testing, Mr. Pyle?
Yes, Missouri Legislature passed in two thousand and twenty-two the Get the Lead Out of School Drinking Water Act, which sets standards for lead concentrations in school drinking water. The act requires schools to conduct inventory, sampling, remediation, and monitoring of all potable drinking water outlets used or that could possibly be used for drinking, food preparation, cooking, or cleaning utensils. In addition, Missouri Legislature has allocated financial support to schools in reducing lead concentration in schools. So that'll be an opportunity for us to, to utilize for that support. To comply with this act, district administration is guided to send out a request for proposal to help get this act accomplished and to help us select a company that can meet the requirements within this act, so.
Does this look at the water coming into the school district, or just, or just the inside the buildings?
Inside the buildings, when you turn the faucet on, any of the faucets that comes out of those spouts. So, and we will have to test this, sorry about that, Ms. Nichols, we will have to test our, these outlets by the start of next school year, so that's why we want to go ahead and get rolling moving forward.
Any questions for Mr. Pyle?
No, move to approval.
I just lost a contact, but no worries. Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And Mr. Pyle again, the request for bids for the geothermal fluid?
Yes, the fluid cooler for the geothermal heating and cooling system at Smith Cotton Junior High is failing, needs to be replaced. District administration will advertise for bids for the fluid cooler and a company that is equipped to install the fluid cooler to work with our existing system. Recommendation will be made at a future board meeting, so that project can be completed.
Is this thing just kind of a, kind of like a big air conditioner loop?
It is, it's, it's a, it's basically a giant radiator where that water can sit and then move through to then be, you know, to help, help the system work properly.
Any other questions for Mr. Pyle? If not, I'll ask for a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And Mr. Pyle again?
Okay, our Board of Education approved during our last meeting in September that professional contractors and engineers would be selected to complete the building improvements for guided and secure entries in the Sedalia Middle School remodel. You've had an opportunity to look in your packet for the, the attached American Institute of Architects Construction contract, and it just needs Board of Education signature. And as a reminder to our board, construction meeting will happen later this week, and construction could start as, as early as, early November. And then the expected completion date is the second week of August next year, so before school next year on these items.
Any questions for Mr. Pyle?
Yes, prevailing wage determination, you've already got that?
Yes.
Good, thank you.
I will ask for a motion to approve the professional contractors and engineers?
So moved.
And, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And a donation is, Mrs. Grinny, there she is.
We received a donation of three thousand dollars from the First United Methodist Church to purchase each student at Whittier a hoodie and a t-shirt that's supposed to be drawn.
Very nice. Very nice. Any questions for Mrs. Grinny? If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve the First United Methodist Church donation in the amount of three thousand dollars to pay for student t-shirts and hoodies.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And for this next item under discussion, the proposed elementary school boundary changes for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, we're going to exit the stage and watch a little show.
All right, Mr. Curry is going to come down and help with navigating that map here in a few moments. But as you look to that map, I want to make sure and cover everything that was in our memo that the Board of Education received for any community members that may be watching tonight, to make sure that we're all have time to kind of think through this and process this. So as we look at the map here, and then also listen in to the, to the information. So as our district administrative team and Ms. Connie with First Student, and some of Connie's superiors at First Student has worked closely, and we're thankful for that relationship as we've worked closely lately in the past few months to, to think about redistricting our elementary boundaries for the next school year. So as we thought about that, we, we realized as a community that our district population has really shifted over the past ten years, which has impacted enrollment at Horseman and at Washington, the most significant portions, as far as their, their enrollment has declined. And Parkview and Skyline is at near, is nearing capacity, we're at capacity now. So that's kind of some of the factors that we started looking at. We also looked at bus routing, major traffic areas, student safety and travel, as Connie was instrumental in helping with that. Future estimates of enrollment and also future development within our community, future construction. So as we look at the map, it was important to team, to our team and for our students' team to balance the numbers, to consider that with these changes that we also, with, with the families and the stakeholders involved, that we kept the changes. families and the stakeholders involved, that we kept the changes as minimal as we could to also make the best decisions as well. So the majority of the redistricting occurred between the boundaries between Skyline and Horseman and Parkview and Washington. The boundary change allowed us to even up some of our numbers. So I'm going to read to you the numbers from our current September count, which is our last count of student numbers, and then what these proposed boundary changes would do. So Heber Hunt Elementary, current enrollment from that September count is 435. Next year, the projection would be at 432, so not a lot of change there. Horseman Elementary is currently at 239. Projected for next year with these changes would put them at 328, so we did, that would help us achieve that goal. Parkview Elementary, current enrollment is 451. Projected for next year with the changes would put them at 426. Skyline, current enrollment is 489 from September count. Next year, if we make these changes, it would put them at 383. That sounds like it's a drastic hit for them as far as those numbers, but we're, when we were looking at that, and I'll talk more on a memo here in just a moment, we see that the future growth in Soudaya is south and west, so we wanted to give them some room to then, some of those new apartments and things that are being finalized. Washington Elementary, current enrollment is 208. Projected for 24 and 25 school year with the changes would be 279. So that would help us balance that as well. Mr. Curry could have a second job working this scribble map, so I'll drag on him, so I'm thankful that he's up there tonight. He's got this pulled up for us and thank him for his time and helping with this. As you can see, the different colors to the left, he's got Heber Hunt, it's kind of your chart, shows you Parkview, Washington, Skyline, and Horseman. And I'm going to look down and talk again from a memo. As we mentioned, in an effort to balance these numbers between Washington and Parkview, we extended Washington's boundaries from Ingram to Ohio and 12th Street. And he'll kind of show you the overview and then we'll take questions, of course, anytime, just interrupt if you need to.
I should have brought a mouse.
Yeah, he's trying to use the laptops. Okay, so within that, as Mr. Curry is navigating towards that area, also for our community members to hear and someone in the audience, the board had in their memo that it was, that we would also move our boundaries in Washington east from where to the 50 Highway intersection. The team also extended Washington's boundary to the east of Marshall Street to the Soudaya Airport where Mr. Gardner was asking about now. That area was formerly in Parkview and that's, that would be the finish to what we were planning to do for Washington.
If you look, this is the current boundaries right now, and you'll see that this all in here and over in here where Mr. Pyle's talking about, those are all currently in Parkview. And this little section right here is Wash, Washington. And so the proposed changes have this whole boundary extended, like Mr. Pyle just explained, from, is this Ohio, all the way over to the highway where 12th Street intersects with 50 Highway. And then we also extended it out here to encompass this area into Washington as well.
You know, right there at Engineer, of course, you've got a crossing guard. Would they, I'm looking there and they could actually use the crossing guard.
Mrs. Carter, I'll stop you there because we're playing on bussing those kids.
Okay.
Across the highway.
Connie?
New area, we're from Ohio, public engineer.
Yeah.
From Ohio, we're the engineer where they walk. Does that, will he'll trailer her too? Don't act it. It's going back to what was probably Miss Gay, or Mr. E.
I will move on to the next portion and then we can take questions, of course, interrupt if you have something to mention as well. So considering the growth in the new construction, Skyline zones, we talked about, so there's apartments being planned behind the high school, there's some across from the high school on the, I guess would be to Sacagawea and then to the east of the high school, or some would be to the east of State Fair Boulevard as well. So that's part of that growth area that we said we wanted to leave some room in Skyline. So we looked at that in a two-phase approach. We would address that area with student numbers warranted as far as the extending Horseman boundary. The current boundary was extended from South 20th to 32nd Street. That area was formerly in the Skyline zone and that's where we've got the majority of those numbers to then help Horseman even that out. If we had to consider a phase two to help with Skyline growth, what we just mentioned, we discussed moving the housing additions east of Thompson Boulevard to the Heber Hunt zone. This area is currently in the Skyline zone, which would help balance, we feel like Heber Hunt has some room if needed, it's housed more students before. Phase two is not being recommended for the next school year at this time, just as something that we knew we could look at if need be. So that is, with the map up there and with the talking points from the memo, that's our proposed boundary changes for the next school year. We would like to bring this back. I don't know if Dr. Fraley would want me to bring this back as early as next month, but this year in December so we can start planning for, as this will impact staff and different things across the district as well.
I'm interested that the phase two. I don't know when that was put in the Skyline area, that was traditionally Heber Hunt. You've got the new makeup schools over there with the Schenfeld, you've got the German tradition, you've got Thompson Hills, the apartment houses that were probably kids off it, off it, that was originally Heber Hunt territory. The other thing that I look at, at all this. We create a problem, we create a future load if we moved one of the hills into.
We've talked about certain scenarios, we've talked about one hill, it's also toward Skyline. There's a boss that goes currently, they go through one hill and picks up a prairie and then ends up at Skyline and back at Horseman. That's the current.
I can see.
Reduce a route. So.
That's kind of, that kind of goes backwards, but that's.
She goes to Horseman and then to Skyline. She picks up a prairie rig and then walk that hill, then comes in.
Comes down prairie and then into the backside of one of the hills and around and then out on the front side.
If you want to do Skyline.
There is a question.
Little one's coming.
We felt like this proposal tonight was the best equitable opportunity for all kids within the district as well.
What's your proposal, only kids told, move from one school to another?
It will be.
Looking around, general speaking, 150, 175.
Say 170.
150, 200 kids. Now, the, this is not just, it's not as easy as the math as it seems because all those kids aren't going to come out of one grade level, they're going to be scattered. So trying to even out the classrooms at Horseman and Washington and add positions back into those schools will be necessary. You know, historically, I've talked about this before, when I went to Horseman as the principal, we were 380-some students. And the line was shifted from east to west to push more of those kids over to Parkview. So I went down to about 340, 350 students, was more manageable. So over time though, the student population has shifted out of that district. And over that time, the district has reallocated some of the teaching positions over into Heber Hunt and over into Skyline. So we will have to look, if we're reducing 100 kids or so over at Skyline, then some of those positions are going to have to follow over. And then they're going to have to rework some of the classrooms that have since been changed, turned into computer labs, made into behavioral resource, recovery rooms, and those type of things. So it's not without its pains and it's not as simple as the numbers, you know, foretell. And the same thing with Washington.
And one of those challenges that Dr. Fraley was talking about also that comes to our mind is the students that are currently, that would be fourth graders next year that are currently in third, we would work with those families to allow them that opportunity to stay in their current school. And the challenge piece will come in as if they have younger siblings because we would need them to then move back to where their residence is. But we'll work through those things.
We also looked at 20th to 24th. Believe it or not, that picks up quite a few kids. I can't remember that number off the top of my head, maybe it was 20 or 30. But it moves the needle, it doesn't move the lot, but if we extend it all the way down 32nd, that really picks up several students or a few dozen.
We feel like this is the best proposal to, again, disrupt the least amount of families but also balance our buildings and balance our enrollment as best we could.
And really trying to figure out the Skyline situation because it is our bubble, the largest bubble. And it appears that, you know, we have, as you, as you probably know, that one district that used to go to Heber Hunt, Mr. Gardner correct us, we have apartment buildings going up right behind Farm Hall now. Now, we can't predict how many kids are going to live there, we don't know, we won't know. Those things will, you know, make some adjustments too. There's a couple of housing developments that you're probably aware of too that are in Skyline District, because if you look at Skyline, the district itself is massive from a geographical standpoint, extend all the way down to Smalls Road to the south where Buckley is, on the other side of the highway 25. There are a few developments that are planned, I don't know the timing of those developments. There was property purchased, like the Southern End Tower District, which is on Smalls, Smalls 65, that has already been plotted off, about 30 or 40 home lots. So when that is developed, I don't know, but there are plans for many, many single family homes in that district.
And you've also got to, you've also got to encourage multi-family, or multi-family homes simply because that's an entry into the housing market and that's where some of our personnel are going to be living. You do not want to place our people out of living in this district.
No, we're landlocked to the west, we're landlocked toward the, to the east. To the north, as we discussed, largely industrial, we don't, you know, a lot of industrial land that direction, so it appears that everything's going to be southerly.
So we will bring this back for a decision at a later time, next month or two, depending on input we might take, receive as well from this meeting tonight.
Yeah, I do have one. First of all, let me say, I appreciate the time and effort you all have put into this. This is never a pretty subject to discuss and it brings out a lot of emotion and I think you've really tried to do it very well. And disrupt the least amount of people and make it be the most effective change. Going back to what Dr. Fraley said, number of students does not necessarily correspond to certain grades and stuff. Will these, will the schools, do, will these schools with making the adjustments have enough room for every teacher to have a classroom?
We will have to displace some other programs back into smaller areas.
Okay. And I mean, I know that's never pleasant, but I do.
Mr. Vogel is going to have to combine, would have to combine potentially specials into a classroom.
My title will have to go forward to the room.
Forward to the room for title. Now, now that is of course until, even when we, we would move fourth grade as a potential over to the middle school. And then that frees up a lot of space. So a lot of factors involved.
I mean, I'm just concerned, I think it's very important that each teacher has their own classroom and I'm not in favor of putting teachers on carts or transporting them around.
Yes, I understand. It would be most likely the potentially special teacher to share, your EL teacher, they may have a full classroom. The title may currently have a full classroom, that would be reduced. Your SLPs, occupational therapists, might have to go back into a smaller, smaller. And it's better, yeah.
But these changes will keep our neighborhood content.
Correct.
It's, it's a step towards what Dr. Fraley mentioned as well, what we'll do the next year, 25, 26 school years, so that gets us moving in that direction again to even things out.
Depending on how, we drill down a little further now into how that may actually look, it may be that we need to recommend not shifting until we shift to the fourth grade, if we shift to the fourth grade. But we need to decide whether we are or we aren't.
Thank you.
Thank you. Very good.
Nice job.
Oh, is that yours?
Yeah, yeah. Here, you'd have to speak on, thank you.
That's a lot of work. Let there be light. Here we are. Okay, next under discussion is the SMS Booster Club. Mr. Frye and Ms. Estes?
Good evening.
Good evening.
So we were wanting to, I have been approached, the Soudaya Middle School has not had a PTA or PTO for quite some time simply because it is one grade level. And so I've been approached by several parents that just want to, was asking about having a PTA, Ms. Estes being one of them, she has lots of PTA experience. As we started to research the difference between PTO, PTA, and a booster club, we felt because it is just one year currently at the middle school, that a booster club would be more sufficient as opposed to a PTA or PTO because of our only one-year commitment. At that point, we would also have teachers that would also be a part of the PT, or the booster club because they would be the ones that would, would be able to transfer it from year to year. So we're just requesting that we have a booster club at Soudaya Middle School.
What kind of oversight by school administration do you see?
Say that again.
What kind of oversight by school administration do you see?
I would be involved as well. I would attend every meeting, obviously, the. Um, I would attend every meeting, obviously, at the Booster Club, um, and then everything would have to be approved through me, um, when it come to any activities or any hospitality events that we're going to take.
Mr. Frye, is, is, correct me if I'm wrong, but is this not similar to, uh, you know, a P, you know, many of our PTA organizations are 501(c)(3), some of them have a designation, some don't. So along those lines, it's sort of in lieu of, or serving that function?
Yes, it's serving the same function as, yes, a PTA.
So I know at a lot of the elementary buildings, which some may or may not think fifth grade is, I do, um, there's always the holiday parties or the seasonal parties, that type of thing. Um, are they currently being done now for fifth graders? Like the fall party, the winter party?
Currently, they are not. Um, we have, recently this year, we are a title school, um, so we are going to begin doing, um, title evening nights and things like that.
Okay.
But we would think that the Booster Club would help with that, they want to be more, parents want to be more involved.
Okay, so things like that would be brought back, so they would be similar to some of the fun activities that are going on in your elementary buildings?
Correct.
Cool, good, good.
Can I ask one question? Why, why would you not go with the PTA where they already are 501(c)(3), and just like the other ele- elementaries have their PTAs?
Hi, my name is Ms. Estes. Um, so to answer that question, um, some of the elementary schools are, are veering from a PTA and switching to a PTO. What happens with a PTA is you're under the Missouri umbrella. So as a PTA, you pay your dues, and then as that PTA, you pay dues to the state. Um, there's all kinds of benefits with that. I will tell you, um, I'm on round two, I'm on my younger son, um, my older son is a junior, and in all of my years, um, in doing PTA, and I've done this since Jacoby was in kindergarten, um, I cannot stand here and say this is the benefit of paying dues to the Missouri PTA. Um, a lot of what we do, you know, we, we have not utilized anything, um, we're just kind of paying money to the state PTA and not receiving any benefits, if that makes sense.
Okay, so.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, uh, I, I myself have been involved with the PTA, and I agree with you on that. I guess my, my thought would be then, is if, if the middle school is going to go with having a Booster Club to get away from having to pay those PTA dues, then are we opening up the door for the other elementaries to decide to follow suit and do the same?
I, I can tell you from my experience, I would not see the downside of that. Um, you know, essentially in my mind, a parent teacher organization, whether it's a PTA, a PTO, or a Booster Club, like, your main job is to support the school, yes, and, you know, to do those fun things, um, you know, as mentioned, like, the parties, kind of helping with fundraisers, and maybe, you know, conference meals, and as a, as a parent group organizing meals for the staff, so that's another thing that doesn't have to come out of the budget, um, you know, helping with fun things, providing popsicles, you know, little things of that nature. Um, so in my mind, I don't see a downside to having a Booster Club versus a PTA or a PTO.
Couple of things that will, will maybe help you as you do this. Do you anticipate taking in any more than $40,000?
No.
Okay, all right.
No.
Well, no, the reason for that is very simple, if you, when you're setting this up, instead of using Form 1023, you can use 1023 EZ. You actually whip out the credit card, uh, and apply for it at pay.gov, and you can get it. You should pay attention to your, uh, to your bylaws, and make sure that, that they, they will comply with the 501(c)(3) status. Uh, it's easy, it's not that difficult to do.
Are there any other questions, comments, concerns for Mr. Frye or Ms. Estes? Again, this is tonight for discussion, so it'll be brought back.
I do have one more question, and may be directed towards Dr. Fraley, is that I know that, like, other Booster Clubs, um, have to report to Mr. Middleton, you know, certain information that he wants for the Booster Clubs, or if we, if we open this up, that all schools can have a Booster Club instead of a PTA, is there going to be someone that they report to, as to, you know, who the, who the member, who the, who the people are that are running it? Things like that?
That would be something that the building administrator, be it, something that they would need to take on to oversee, just like Mr. Middleton oversees the, the high school activities.
Okay. It does say in their information provided to us in the packet, under fundraisers and activities, um, prior approval will be sought for all fundraisers or activities involving students. Approval process would be the SMS Booster Club will receive prior approval from the district's activities director and assistant superintendent for all fundraisers or activities associated with students. I don't know if that helps answer, you know, but the activities director was mentioned in their info to us, um, that there would be some involvement, and assistant superintendent would be aware of fundraising and activities going on.
Yeah, every, all fundraising still has to be approved.
Right, great.
Yes, and I put it in there simply for that. Anytime we do any type of fundraising, we always get approval first.
But I, I do share, Ms. Estes, because I, I remember when I was principal at Horseman, and I first learned that PTA took, I don't know.
Four dollars and 25 cents per person.
They were taking, like, for every five dollars were brought in, they were taking four. I'm like, that's highway robbery. It needs to stay here, this building, it doesn't. So, just to be under the umbrella of the PTA, uh, and use their, you know, resources.
Would, would you have any problem, and this is something that, that, that needs to be looked at by any sort of club, would you have any problem, uh, at the very minimum, you know, making sure that the, that a copy of the Form 990 that you file every year, it's a postcard, uh, would be given to, to the central office? And would you have any problem having the, would the district have a problem with the mailing address for the organization to be at the school? The, the reason for, the reason for that is real simple. If mail starts to pile up in there, they can very quickly tell there's something wrong going on with the Booster Club. It's just a way for, informal way for administration to keep track of those things. Would you have any problem with that?
Do you guys have your bylaws already written?
We do not.
See me if you need some.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? No? Thank you all.
Thank you.
And we'll have this back at next month's meeting for approval, or not. Okay, information, the attendance reports, Dr. Fraley?
Yeah, and I'm, uh, happy to say that it's moving in the right direction as of now, knock on wood, uh, as we enter the flu bug season. Uh, you will see that district-wide, our, this is our 90/90, 90% of our students with 90% or higher, uh, from September to October, moved from 86.2 to 87.91. Uh, I want to applaud SMS for being the highest at 91.5, uh, and all our building administrators and staff who, who have been working tirelessly, you know, getting kids to school, getting to, to school on time, making home visits, making phone calls, uh, Bob messaging, uh, attendance messages out to the district about the importance, uh, trying, trying to make that, make that work. Uh, the, the next 8.2 is the ADA. Again, this is the formula calculation number, the district, uh, right now, as of September 30th, was 46.46.35, or 94.42%. I'll keep a close eye on that number. And it looks like, uh, Horseman at 96.41 has the highest attendance in the district right now.
Very good. Any questions for Dr. Fraley on the attendance reports? Moving on to membership and enrollment, Dr. Fraley?
Yeah, this is our, uh, September count, and you will see in there that enrollment September of 2022, uh, was 5,047, and that's pre-K through 12. Enrollment September of 2023 is 5,071, so we picked up 24 students. I will tell you that since this report ran, uh, we are now sitting at 5,121 student enrollment.
Wow. Okay, any questions for Dr. Fraley on membership and enrollment? Last item on the agenda is basically just a reminder to us, the board members, of our upcoming conference, MSBA Annual Conference, next week in Kansas City. Um, your confirmations are attached and will be in conversation, um, maybe between meetings tonight, um, just to kind of make our, um, carpooling plans if possible, or anything of that sort. So, uh, thank you, Lisa, for keeping us in line. Okay, that concludes tonight's agenda. Do I hear a motion to adjourn to closed executive session?
I move to adjourn the regular session meeting and notice is hereby given that the Board of Education of the Sudeia School District 200, having duly voted to close its meeting as authorized by Section 610.021 RSMO, subsection 1, legal actions, 3, hiring, firing, disciplining, or promoting, 13, personnel records, 14, records which are protected, 18, public safety or law enforcement, and 19, security system and structural plans. By law of the Missouri statutes, we'll conduct a closed meeting immediately following adjournment of regular session meeting on October 23rd, 2023, at Smith Cotton High School.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in, a roll call vote, Barbara.
Ms. Parfagan?
Aye.
Mr. Gardner?
Aye.
Mr. Groupie?
Aye.
Mr. Kimpton?
Aye.
Mrs. Moon?
Aye.
Ms. Nichols?
Aye.
Ms. Schrader votes aye.